All right, Diana, let's roll.
I don't need any permission for more of this.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, September 12th. And if we'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first thing we want to do today is take a look at our agenda. Are there any adjustments or changes, any additions to today's agenda? Any changes?
Madam Chair, I can make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, at this point in time, we have our public comment period. It's a time where the public is welcome to address the county board on any matter of concern. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Have any commissioners or administrator received any emails?
No, Madam Chair, I have not.
All right, seeing or hearing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda, which I do want to point out is rather lengthy. I believe we've set another record for the length of our agenda. So looking through, we almost filled the whole alphabet. We came close. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Starlee. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we're now moving on to Land Services, and Tim Nelson has joined us at the microphone to talk a little bit about our recycling center store attendant.
I thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. I was actually prepared to sit back there for a while, I thought, with as many things on the consent agenda, something was going to be pulled in. Yeah, I come to you with a kind of a longstanding item that's been, people have commented for a long time on this. We've operated the recycling center. We've had a budget shop in there since the eighties. And we have utilized temp employees, where we hire a seasonal temp, and they can only work for a period of less than six months, and then they have to, then they have to not be working for us for a period of time before they could be hired back on. And the whole point of that was to basically operate the store during the summer months and during the winter months when things seemed to cool down a little bit, figuratively and literally, that we would use one of the, one of the other permanent staff to operate the store when, when needed. And basically, we have found increasingly over, especially the last years, that there really hasn't been a cooldown period, that the, both the recycling materials processing through the facility and the store use in and of itself has kind of kept up to the point where we have needed to retain a person or a temp. And what we have done is we've basically hired a temp for six months, let them go, hire someone else for a temp for six months, and have to let them go, then hire back the other one and let them go. And we run into a problem if we, basically, the way that M.C.I.T., Minnesota County's insurance, or governmental trust, kind of figures it that if you do that over a certain period of time, what, what's kind of, it would be noted as a serial employee, or that position actually should be an employee-type position. And so basically, my, my request for you is, is kind of longstanding. I should have probably come to you some years ago about this, but basically is taking that, that temporary part-time position to put it into a permanent part-time position, still part-time, about 24 hours a week, basically, just for the operation of the store. You know, we've also had some, some impacts in being able to staff it just because of other staff issues with health issues and things like that and vacations. And so I think what this would do is lend some stability to the operation of that store, some consistency in the personnel. Every six months, if we change, we have kind of different practices that, that go in and retraining and everything like that. So this basically would, would add that level of stability to the, to that store. So I included in the numbers into you, and the only difference really over the past from what I've, I've actually paid by having a temp back-to-back, so we've had a temp kind of year-round, but just two different temps in a year. The difference is really the benefits that go with that temporary position. So the actual difference in what would be spent isn't that different from what had been spent over the last number of years.
Any questions or comments for Tim? Commissioner Starlee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think this is a great idea, Tim. So what would permanent part-time mean? I think it's really important for the public to know that a shop is open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or from 10 to 5, or whatever. So what would that include then with this?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Starlee, that, that's a good question. And basically, that, that even goes back to some of the comments that we had before, because when we would be running close to our six-month time period, there would be questions as to, oh, is the store going to shut down? Is it going to close if you can't find someone to, to actually run that? And what this does is that, that creates a, the store will be open indefinitely, I mean permanently now. It would be 24 hours a week. It would be in the hours that are posted in the, on the website, and it, it would be continued operation. And just, it would be, you know, that, that person would be basically that person as an employee and would be consistent throughout the year. So it would, it would ensure that the store would remain open during all seasons.
So at this time, you're not ready to say it's going to be Friday, Saturday, or whatever, yet?
Well, they, they, it is, it is listed on the website, and we are open on Saturday. So, yeah.
I was just wondering if it'll be different now that it'll be?
No.
Oh.
No, it'll be the same hours.
Okay.
And, and we can always look at, and that's what we do, is try to look back in terms of the actual usage and people's comments, in terms of, yes, it would be great to, and that's, we've opened, you know, the, the recycling materials drop-off part of that later on Thursdays to 6:00 p.m., and we've opened on Saturdays and such like that, too. So we do, we are open six days out of the seven days, and the store is, is part of that as well. And the hours are listed, I don't, I'm on the top of my head, but basically every afternoon.
I just thought maybe they'd change, or you'd do something a little bit different. Thank you for that.
Mr. White.
And I would like to comment on the value of that budget shop and, well, and another thing, on the person that is, has been running the place or operating, working inside there. She has been doing an excellent job. Haven't, I hadn't gone there since a year or so before COVID, so I stopped in, used to do it all the time, like way back when Jeff Sylvester was there, and it was a little tiny space. But it's an excellent resource for this community. Winter coats, children's stuff, I mean, it's just, there's so much, and it's just a godsend for people because it's, the prices are affordable. So, and the person in charge, Diane, I don't know her last name, does an excellent job, too. I just wanted to give a shout-out for that. So I think it's a wonderful, it's a good thing for the community to know that this place will be open. So thank you.
And I would echo those comments as well. It's hu, it's a huge need that we have in Cook County, and it really fulfills a need that none of our other thrift shops does provide very, very affordable clothing, necessary items, and so we do have that consistent demand year-round, and I'm really supportive of making this a permanent part-time position.
I have a question. Does she get any benefits besides the hourly wage and, and, you know, liability and work miniscomp? Does she get any insurance?
Madam Chair, Commissioner White, what, this, I guess Brady or Leah would be able to answer, the HR Director, more in terms of the types of benefits, but I want to, I want to just throw this out there so that everybody's aware, not really taken by surprise, because we are creating a new position, and it's not a temp. A temp is, is at-will and just can come and go and such, that we actually do have to put out post-notice for this. So it's not as though we are terminating Diane. We've, we've, we've had a lot of, of comments with regards to and in support of Diane, but it, there does have to be an application period, and she is well-aware of that. I've talked, talked her through that, and, and she is going to be applying immediately. But I guess either Brady or, or Leah would be able to answer more in terms of what exact the benefits would be.
Yeah, and it, it's not eligible for health insurance, but it is for PERA. And of course, the taxes, federal, federal taxes. That's really it. Life, long-term disability would be the other two that it's eligible for.
Thank you, Auditor Powers.
With part-time, the life and long-term disability kick in after a certain period. They're not eligible immediately like a full-time employee is. But they also would have PTO accrual rates as well, so they'd start earning vacation pay and vacation time paid holidays at a prorated amount for the amount of hours they work. So they also would be eligible to purchase dental from us or vision, any of those other employee-purchased options.
Thank you for providing that information for us. That's really helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just also wanted to communicate that I've heard a lot of feedback from the public about the value of the budget shop and, and requests for, for more hours and more space and all that stuff. I think this is a really great step towards that, and, and full support, so thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to North Shore Land Company mandatory environmental assessment worksheet, and Neva Maxwell will be joining us this morning from Land Services to provide us with more information. As you recall, we tabled this item until today, September 12th. Neva, thank you for coming this morning.
Good morning. Thank you. So North Shore Land Company, also known as Luton Resort, has proposed a few different development proposals, and so two of them are before you today. This first one is, is an action item that doesn't technically require the Board of Commissioners to approve this resolution, but we felt because there was another EAW also before you, that we felt this was a helpful communication tool to the public and anybody that may be interested. So excuse the formality, and I'll try to be succinct here. So this first item is the mandatory environmental assessment worksheet. So this is a recognition that part of their project is for a new hotel and a lodge expansion on the main lodge, and because of the number of units and its close proximity to Lake Superior, it triggers an automatic mandatory environmental assessment worksheet per Minnesota state rules. The Board of Adjustment reviewed a variance request. They wanted to encroach on the side yard setback, and this gets a little nuanced, but we allowed the review of the variance to begin because we're not issuing any permits for the construction. So we were in harmony with the Minnesota state rules with that determination. But we felt that, or the Board of Adjustment really felt that their approval or denial of a variance could be interpreted as an intermediate decision, and Minnesota state rules are very specific that we can't issue any permits for building or do these intermediate decisions for zoning, for projects that trigger mandatory EAWs until the EAW is done. Otherwise, what's the point of the EAW? So like I said, it gets a little nuanced, but essentially, the Board of Adjustment determines that they don't want to make a decision on a variance until the EAW is done. And the project proposers did recognize that they fully planned on doing the EAW. They just were trying to look for some assurance as they do their design to see whether it was feasible. So it's a little bit of a chicken or the egg situation. So before you is a resolution for this first one, for the mandatory EAW, and in it, there's a, a recognition that the Board of Adjustment did recognize that the variance may be determined as a preliminary approval, and so that they voted to table that variance hearing until the completion of the EAW. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Neva this morning? I'd just like to remark, I did make a comment at Public Comment that evening as a citizen, and just indicating some environmental concerns from previous situations, and that I would not be making any kind of decision or participating in a decision until the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission and the environmental worksheet was completed. So I just want to make the public aware of that. Commissioner Starlee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad that we're moving forward with this. I'm very familiar with the land, and as I look it over, I'm glad that this will be happening.
Thank you. Administrator, your.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I was just curious, Neva, what kind of tribal consultation has occurred to date, or what is planned in that area?
Well, through the environmental review process, they'll have an opportunity to comment.
Okay. So, so it's just, they can comment like anyone can comment, but there hasn't been like an active consultation process?
No, not specifically. Our noticing process, it's very clear who we absolutely have to notice, and that's a certain geographical area and as well as the DNR. The North Shore Management Board is also noticed on any project that's within Lake Superior North Shore Management Zone, and Grand Portage is a member of the North Shore Management Board. So there could be a way that the North Shore Management Board passes on those notices to their members, potentially. Or now that I know that there's interest, I have added Margaret Watkins onto our automatic noticing group, which usually includes county departments and the townships and whomever else, the local lake associations. So she is just kind of automatically added in now that I know that they have interest.
Great, thank you.
I appreciate that. I think that's really a wise addition to our list. Other comments or questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend that the Cook County Board of Commissioners support the environmental assessment worksheet, EAW.
Thank you, Commissioner Starlee. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Anything further?
Just be sure, this is to approve the proposed resolution. Is that correct?
Yeah, the resolution, that's attached to the report.
Correct.
So we'll just be sure to include that.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments?
Can we just clarify that that motion does include the resolution?
Absolutely. Correct. You're comfortable with that, Commissioner Starlee and Commissioner White?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the other project before you that I have is, again, North Shore Land Company or Luton Resort. They applied for a conditional use permit for a project that is unique. So this is called a Nordic Spa, and it's a series of outdoor baths and saunas, and the location of it is kind of where the Poplar River meets Lake Superior, kind of in that corner of their property for anybody that may be familiar with this. So I processed the conditional use permit over the course of June and July, and at the August 9th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to table this request until a discretionary environmental assessment worksheet is completed. The determination for this was largely because they felt that there was a potential for significant environmental effects from this use, and so they wanted more technical information to help them understand the actual layout and use of this property with this use in mind. So I'll kind of highlight some of the things in my report for anybody that may be interested. So the written comments that I received during the public noticing process, we received several from nearby property owners, as well as the Minnesota Department of Health, the County Soil and Water Conservation District, and the Department of Natural Resources. The state agencies and the Soil and Water Conservation District all expressed levels of concern about the proposed use and the nature of the location of the project due to the close proximity to local water resources and the geology of the area. There also was some concern that this project may be considered phased and connected with the earlier project I just described to you, which requires a mandatory EAW. And if a project is phased and connected, then it also needs to be lumped into that environmental review process. But that's kind of a, a side note. Essentially, the Planning Commission felt that just by this project alone, it had enough merits to be needing its own discretionary EAW. Let's see, so the applicant, their agent did recognize during the public conversation during the Planning Commission meeting that they plan on doing an EAW. Their purpose of coming forward with the conditional use permit before they do the environmental review was because they were looking for, again, some assurance that if they do the investment of the environmental review, that they've got the conditional use permit to move forward. Unfortunately, that's not really the way the process works, that we need the environmental assessment worksheet before a conditional use permit can be granted, because the Planning Commission needs the information that they need to do their review. So again, it was another little bit of a chicken and the egg discussion. The, uh, let's see, so during the public comment period, Margaret Watkins with Grand Portage Reservation, she's their water quality specialist, she was there, and she recognized that Grand Portage Band, Boas Fort Band, and Fond du Lac all have property rights in the northeast corner of Minnesota, which allow tribal members to harvest fish, collect berries, harvest wild rice, hunt, and other property rights, which are reserved under the 1854 Treaty authority. And so she said that in order to effectively exercise those rights, the resources need to be protected. From a technical side of things, she expressed concern about the stormwater runoff plans. She said that the traditional 100-year, 24-hour storm event isn't adequate today due to climate change and the intensified precipitation patterns, and that instead, stormwater infrastructure design modeling should use a 500-year, 24-hour storm event to design stormwater runoff, which is a technical way of saying that we're getting big rainstorms these year, these days, which are much more frequent and larger than what historic modeling has had. So she would like to see a more rigorous stormwater modeling for this proposal. The other concern is that this area of Minnesota has very low salts in the water, and trout species are especially sensitive to salts. She said that the salt spas next to a trout stream without a plan for wastewater treatment can be expensive infrastructure, and it's also concerning due to the close proximity. So these are outdoor salt baths, and we don't want salts in our, in our rivers and lakes. It's essentially an impossible pollutant to remove. So it could be very devastating if there was overflow of these outdoor salt baths going downhill into the river and the lake. So that was her, one of her primary concerns. She also summarized that her priorities were that the trout habitat isn't affected and vegetation will be maintained, and that all previous efforts to restore the Poplar River are supported through time. As you may know, the Poplar River has, the watershed itself has had millions of dollars put into its restoration efforts for water quality over the years. So she wanted to see consistency with those efforts. The Planning Commission closed public comment, and they recommended tabling the application, the conditional use permit pending the completion of the environmental review process, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. This does get a little nuanced between some of the environmental and legal aspects.
Are there any questions commissioners have? Commissioner Starlee.
Thank you, Neva, for putting our list together for us. Well, this morning, we heard in the news that Duluth got six inches of rain and went down the hillside and closed the tunnels. You know, it's just a whoosh. So, anyway, my question is, who's doing the assessments? Who is hired to do that, both you and then the North Shore Land Company?
Yeah, so just like any environmental assessment worksheet, the applicant typically, how it works out is they'll hire out an environmental consultant to collect the data for the environmental assessment worksheet, and then they'll provide that to our office, and we will process the environmental assessment worksheet. Depending on the technicality of the request, we may hire an outside consultant. In this case, we would, because I am not a geological specialist, and this project will require some very high level of expertise to review. So there, I would anticipate that there would be kind of two consultants on either providing their technical feedback.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills.
Do you know why the project requires the area that it's proposing for clearcutting?
I think the idea is that they're envisioning, it's kind of like the nostalgia factor from my conversations with them. It's, if you're envisioning like these outdoor pools, you want a nice view, and this is a little bit of conjecture on my part from my discussion with them, but I don't think there's a specific infrastructure reason. I think it's, it's, it's finding the best location for their vision of their, of their resort.
Yeah, and you're not, I don't, maybe not supposed to know why, but, but the clearcut area extends way behind it, so it's not a view shed issue.
Oh, yeah.
It's a hillside.
I think I see what you're talking about, yeah. So I, I'm trying to give you the information you absolutely need to know, because we could sit here forever continuing about this discussion, but one important aspect of the proposal is that they're planning on remove, putting this spa location where there is currently a hillside, and so that's going to require removing a significant amount of ledge rock, bedrock material. They, they describe in their application that they want a, a look that's similar to the Highway 61 rock faces as you come up. So that was one of my concerns from a technical standpoint, that we have a safety factor from where those ledge rock cliffs are to the pools, which didn't really feel, it needs more technical guidance, I would say, to ensure it's safely done. One important point that they updated during the Planning Commission is that they don't intend to actually blast out the rock. They're working with a specialist that has this expansive masonry material, Dexpan, I think it's called, that they put in the rock crevice, and it expands and just nudges out the rock, if you will.
Fracts it.
Yeah. So, yeah, another reason that the Planning Commission felt that this needed an EAW for this type of project and the development itself.
And Neva, am I correct, it's 35 to 40 feet of bedrock that would be removed?
Yeah, it's going to be, well, so it would essentially be in a volume, essentially, and I haven't seen that calculation.
Okay.
But the cliff is going to be 35 to 40 feet tall, and so this will be kind of in a bold cliff area where they create this flat space and create the pools.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions or discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to order discretionary EAW due to the nature and location of the project, which may have potential for significant environmental effects.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starlee. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
I, I, I think it's really cool, but clearly, it's huge impact, so I'm really curious just how that's all going to pan out. And it's, it will be, I think it'll be, look really cool to have that, that bowl effect, too, but just clear, we all know clearcutting hillsides is tricky, or, or, you know, leads to some environmental issues, so.
Yeah, and if I may, it's a pretty novel use. As zoning administrator, I usually try to find other counties that have a similar use to kind of see what they've, and I haven't found one in such a unique location or in Minnesota at all. So I can certainly see that it could be quite an attractive amenity, but we need to have more data.
Absolutely. Commissioner White.
And I have, I mean, the big concern that I, I have is the salt baths, because it's, it's like mining for mercury or something. It's like, you can't have one, once, you can't, you can't have one spillage once, because we will do long-term damage to Lake Superior and to the trout, so.
Yeah, and that was kind of something that felt unanswered, was the wastewater treatment plan. Because it's so close to the river and the lake, if, if you had an ideal location, you'd have a big field where, where that wastewater could just naturally get treated by, well, dispersal in a non-shoreland area. But because you're in shoreline area and so close to the river and lake, you, you don't leave yourself a lot of room for that. So that's what the design, to, to provide more information, to see if there's going to be significant environmental effects.
Absolutely.
And do you know, is there a process for eliminating salt?
No, yeah.
Water?
Yeah, in, in earlier professional lives, I've worked within city infrastructure, and that's one of the biggest concerns there is sodium chloride treatment and trying to be responsible about that amount of use, because once you get salts in the water, there's, there's no cost-effective way to remove it.
Desalination plant, right?
Yeah, right. Hopefully, your nearby wetlands could filter it out before it gets into the surface water.
Other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on now to human resources, and it's good to see Leah Ekstrom with us this morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board. I am before you today with another batch of job descriptions that we've reviewed and updated. I have seven slash eight, I'll say, before you. We have seven jobs that we've reviewed, and one we have created as a career job ladder, the Soil and Water Conservation Technician 1 and 2. We currently just have a technician, and we are looking to create a 1 and 2. We currently just have a technician, and we are looking to create a 1 and 2, um, for that position to allow for not only career growth, but then also job growth and, um, project management within the department and having that availability. So I have, do you want me just to go through the list? I can just kind of summarize if that would be helpful.
That might be helpful.
It's a lot, so, um, we have our Veteran Service Officer position that's been, um, reviewed, the job description has been updated, the classification has been updated. This is a job that will be going from a grade 170. We're recommending a grade 180 in that position. Um, sorry. Um, we have the Deputy Auditor Tax and Election Administrator, um, position. This position also, same thing, job description review, classification review, we're recommending, it is a currently a 170, we're recommending a 180. We have our Public Health and Human Services Adult and Home and Community Supervisor, Services Supervisor. This is currently a 190, we're recommending a 200 for the supervisory position. We have our MIS IT Technician. Again, job description review, classification review, this one, um, is currently a 170. It's recommended to stay the same. It's currently, um, we're recommending a 170. We have our MIS System Administrator. Uh, this is currently a 170, we're recommending up to a 180. We reviewed our Emergency Management Director position. Again, this is currently a 170, and we're recommending a 180 on that. Um, I mentioned our Soil and Water Conservation Technician position. Um, after reviewing this with Soil and Water and DDA, we're recommending that it become a Technician 1 and Technician 2. Um, feel that there's a number of reasons to do this, but one would be for ease of hiring, creating someone at an entry-level position and giving them the ability to grow within the job, and then also have the expertise to create, um, project and work site leadership at a Technician 2. Currently, the technician position is a 150. We're recommending that the Technician 1 go to a 170, and the Technician 2 to 180.
So are there any questions for Leah? Commissioner White?
Could you just for, um, explain when, to the listening public, what going from 170 to 180 means, 180 to 190? Is it an increase? It's not the job description, it's the rate of pay more than anything else.
Correct, correct. After, um, so we use our Keystone, uh, Keystone System for classification, and so we start at a 100 and we go up to a 260, and it goes by tens, is how our classification system works. So when we talk about going from a 70, it'd be a 170 grade, and your correct commissioner would be then going up to a 180, which is a slightly higher, um, pay grade. Um, and there's a number of reasons that we're recommending these positions. We moved to those.
Madam Chair.
Administrator.
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so yes, it, it does, it is a different pay grade, but the reason for the reclassification has to do with a variety of what they call compensable factors, which relate to the complexity and the autonomy, uh, of, of the work and, and different factors like that. And so, um, yes, it is a different pay scale, but the basis for, for recommending changes in the grades of these positions relates to these different factors that involve the, the nature of the work itself.
Absolutely, and I can say from working on the Personnel Committee, um, I really appreciate all the time and effort, um, put forth not only by Personnel but by you and by your work with DDA. This is a huge step forward for us, and, um, it's just amazing, um, the amount of effort that's been put forward into this, which I believe will really make a difference in our ability to hire employees here in Cook County and keep them. And I think that's a really important thing that we need to do. Commissioner Storey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Leah, for working on this. Really, when you look it over, there's a dollar here, a dollar 50 there. I mean, it, it wasn't a whole lot, but it just makes it look so much better when we have to hire people that were up now basically on par with most everybody else. Is that the goal? That we would be right in there with hiring in the future?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, thanks a bunch.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I think that's absolutely right. I mean, that's the goal. You know, we completed our market study last year to help with our entire grid, and now we're moving forward and completing our job descriptions to ensure that our employees have correct job descriptions that are accurate, accurately represented, and also so that they're paid, you know, and at the correct classification to other counterparts throughout the state. Um, and I agree that it'll help with recruitment, retention, very much, so, and it's a process.
Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other thing that, yeah, the other thing that bears mentioning is, um, when somebody migrates from their existing grade to, to the new grade, the way we do that is we take them to the hourly rate that is just above their current rate. And so, for example, if you're a, I'm, I'm making up these numbers because I'm not looking at the pay table, but let's say you're currently a 170, step five, um, and your new grade is 180, um, you might end up at like a step three in 180, if that is the hourly rate that is, uh, closest to, to the hourly rate that you're currently making, or just above that. And so we, we did that, we decided that, um, before we started doing any reclassification of positions, because we didn't know what the budget impact was going to be of this analysis. And we wanted to make sure that, um, we were able to slot people into their new grades, um, but not have an inordinate effect on the budget. Um, and we felt that was the fairest way to do that. So, we're handing, handling all the reclassifications that way.
Thank you for that information. I think that's important for the public to know. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, this is long incoming, and since I was elected, um, I was on the Personnel Committee, and it's always been asked for to revisit job classifications, and, and it is a continual process, of course, but we had such a backlog, and, um, and staff have been asking for this for so long, and we have seen so much turnover, and just trying to, uh, get everything lined out based on data and comparables and all of that. This is just professional. I really appreciate your work, and, um, yeah, huge step forward, um, for the organization and our community, so, bravo.
Thanks. We'll continue with the process.
Yeah. It doesn't end, right?
Absolutely. Ongoing, ongoing. All right. Any other questions or comments for Leah? Not is there a motion to approve the updated job descriptions and change in job grades that is listed?
I'll make a motion to approve updated job descriptions as listed.
And also the...
And also the change in...
Grades.
Grades.
Yep.
All right, thank you so much. Is there support? I'll support. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate all your work. All right, so we have coming up, um, what could potentially be a rather lengthy agenda item, and I'm going to recommend we take a short pause before we move on to talk about the levy.
Or it may not be that lengthy. I mean, we've, we've had a lot of discussion about this already.
That is true.
Um, and we did have the special meeting on August 24th to talk about, um, what the, what the preliminary levy was shaping up to look like. Um, I, I mean, we can take a break if that's...
What would the Board like to do?
Madam Chair, I don't need a break right now, but if we do during the, the discussion, I won't be, uh, slow to ask for it.
All right. Please don't be shy. All right, we'll move forward then.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, yes, before you, we have the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget and levy. Um, as I mentioned, we've had quite a bit of discussion already about how the budget was shaping up. We did the, um, the general fund preliminary budget, uh, on July 27th, I believe. Um, subsequently, you had presentations from the Highway Department and from Public Health and Human Services. Um, and we talked about this at the, uh, first August meeting, and then also had a special meeting at the end of August, um, to, to discuss the, the levy and the use of fund balance. So what I'm gonna do this morning is basically, just at a very high level, talk about, uh, what is being proposed so that the, uh, folks who are watching online can, can understand what we're looking at. Um, the budget, or the agenda packet, rather, does contain a full budget book, um, that shows all the three major funds and how, uh, how revenues are being budgeted within those funds. Um, page four of the budget book shows the, uh, summary of all of that information. Um, and so you can see that we have increases across the three major funds, that is the General Fund, Highway, and Public Health and Human Services. Excuse me, which mostly relate to the, um, wage adjustments that the Board approved at the end of last year, uh, after we conducted the market study that showed that we were undercompensating our staff. And what we're trying to do this year and next is to, um, work those increases into the levy, so that by fiscal year 2026, um, those costs have been fully absorbed. And what that requires is that we do an increase this year and another one next year to, to account for those salary adjustments. Um, and so the majority of what you're seeing, um, on the top three lines of the chart on page four, uh, relate to the wage adjustments that, that we've made. Um, another thing, uh, as we've discussed before, the general fund does include a proposed new Assistant County Attorney position. Um, we've talked at length about the, the need for that position, which relates to, um, just the, the workload that the County Attorney's Office has experienced, um, in recent years. Um, the, the downside of not filling or not creating that new position is that we would continue to have, um, a limited time on the part of the County Attorney and the Assistant County Attorney to advise departments, to advise me and, and you, the Board, on issues that really require, uh, legal perspective. And that creates a risk for the organization. And I, I, several times over the last year, I'll, I'll just say I felt very uncomfortable because Molly has been tied up, and it's not throwing Molly under the bus, because she's been working really hard, um, but there have been a number of times where she's just been so buried in preparing for and, and participating in trials, and it's left her with very little time to, to advise us on, on a range of legal issues. Um, so in my mind, the, the addition of a new Assistant County Attorney is essential. I think we need it for the, for the safety of the organization, to make sure that we are receiving the legal counsel that we need to do our jobs, uh, per state statute. And so, um, that, that is another addition to the, the general fund that is accounting for part of that increase that we're seeing compared to 2023. Um, the other things to note in the, uh, in the, uh, preliminary budget and levy, you can see that, um, the, uh, Housing Redevelopment Authority has requested more than it had, than it did the previous year. Um, this Board has repeatedly stated its commitment to investing in housing. Um, and we did receive a, a presentation from the HRA on what they would be using those funds for. Um, there are a couple of major projects going on right now, um, that are, represent a really big step forward for, for our community in terms of providing new housing units. Um, and so that, you know, that increase, while substantial, I think reflects the Board's priorities in terms of making sure that we're adequately addressing the housing issue. Um, the other thing to note is that we are proposing the use of fund balance in both the Highway and the Public Health and Human Services Funds, um, to help offset some of the increases in, in salaries that, uh, that we're working into the levy. Um, when we, when Brady and I were discussing the degree to which we would use fund balance, uh, in this budget, we looked not only at fiscal year 2024, but also at 2025, because we wanted, we wanted to make sure that, um, we create, uh, a path for getting the, the wage increases absorbed into the levy by 2026. And we wanted to make sure that, um, if there was to be a, a bigger increase, that it would occur this year rather than in 2025. And so based on the analysis that Brady did, uh, we feel pretty comfortable that, um, you know, barring any unforeseen major new expenses next year, uh, that is in 2025, um, that the 2025 levy proposal would be lower than the one for 2024. Um, the other thing to note is that we do have some, um, something budgeted, $110,000 for, uh, debt service on bonds that we would issue, um, for the CIP. Um, something that I'm going to talk about in my, in my updates after this agenda item relates to, uh, some new developments here at the courthouse that we're having to contend with, um, related to mold. Uh, that's kind of a wild card that we weren't necessarily, um, expecting, and so, um, you know, there may be additional costs there. But, um, what we're, what we're proposing, based on the discussion that we had at the August 24th special meeting, was a, a proposed preliminary levy of 9% for, for the next budget year. Um, as a reminder to folks who are listening, um, the preliminary levy is just that, it's not the final levy. The Board has, uh, until the end of December to set, um, the final levy, and that would occur after the Truth and Taxation Meeting, which we'll talk about later in this agenda. Um, that will give the public its, its opportunity to comment on the, the proposed budget and levy that's, uh, that's being proposed as well. So I'm going to pause there to see if there are any questions, and I don't know if... Molly, do you have anything you'd like to add regarding the, the new position that you're proposing? Because we haven't really had a, a good chance to talk about that.
Um, sure. So I, I think James summarized it pretty well. The, the problem is, um, not an increase in the criminal caseload, that's not the problem. Um, the problem is having an adequate staff so that, um, when those serious cases do go to trial, we have backup. Um, also, the Assistant County Attorney position, as it's been structured in the last five, 10 years, um, handles the entire adult criminal caseload, with the exception of the sex crimes and the felony domestic violence crimes, which I've been handling. Um, that is, it's very difficult to, for the ACA, I'll call her, um, to handle that and handle the other big part of her job, which is the child protection caseload, advising social workers, um, child support enforcement, mental health and chemical dependency commitments. Um, that part of the job, you've heard, I'm sure, from PHHS about their case numbers, their number of reports. Every single maltreatment call that comes in has legal implications. Um, and the Assistant County Attorney needs to be available to advise social workers in that very important, um, area of, of, uh, child welfare and, um, and vulnerable adult welfare. Um, and she, i- i- it's difficult to provide the kind of support those social workers and social worker supervisors are looking for, while also handing, handling the entire, um, adult criminal caseload. I can't hand over those serious cases to the Assistant County Attorney so I can provide you all with advice and our department heads, um, because she's already stretched to the max, um, with her civil and criminal responsibilities. So what I envision us doing, um, to solve this would be to create, um, two slightly modified, um, job descriptions, one for a kind of a, an entry-level Assistant County Attorney, and one for a more senior-level Assistant County Attorney. The entry-level, uh, County Attorney would handle the less serious criminal caseload, um, and a share of the social services, legal advice, and then the senior county, Assistant County Attorney would handle all the more serious cases, including the ones that I have been handling. Um, and that would free up the County Attorney position to be much more proactive, much more available, um, to the County Department Heads and to the County Board and County Administration. Um, we have, have an active and proactive County Board, and I really appreciate that. Um, you're seeking innovative solutions for the problems that we have. There's the new HRA, you know, there, there's a, a giant construction project potentially coming up also, that's gonna require a lot of legal advice so that we don't get in hot water and we don't have problems for decades to come with our new construction. So, um, I really... So I really want to be available to the board and to the department heads. We could do a lot more with ordinances. We could dig into some of the county policies that we have and kind of smooth operations. But it is, it is a cost to the county to add this position, obviously. But I think that the, the lessening of the risk to the county would far exceed the cost of the position. Because when, when we're available to give legal advice when it's needed, we make it much less likely that we're opening up the county for liability, for expensive lawsuits that we do not want to get into. So that's a summary of my rationale. We've recently changed case management system, so it's not really helpful for me to show you statistics. They're not complete. They wouldn't fairly represent our work. But I am happy to provide any answers to any questions that you might have about this. I think it's needed. I think it's been needed for quite a while, and we've just been hesitant to ask for it because we can't show you an increase in our criminal caseload. We can show you an increase in the PHHS work that we do for certain. And I think it's pretty obvious that this board is an active board and should be. And I think that's what your constituents are asking for. And you need the legal advice to move forward safely and without undue risk to the county.
Questions that commissioners have for Attorney Higgins?
Madam Chair, I don't have a question, but I, I wanted to, to share my perspective that there, much like Attorney Higgins said, there are so many changes happening. We'll be looking at our land use guide plan again. Ordinances, people have been asking for updated ordinances for years and years and years before, before I was elected, and it really needs to happen. And so those aspects alone, let alone the increase in the workloads that have already been happening, I think it makes all kinds of sense. I'm, I'm really excited for the work that we can do with the more legal resources. So I appreciate you bringing it forward. And, and yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll strengthen our hand for, for dealing with issues and, as you said, proactively, preventing issues ahead of time and just trying to get that longer term, those longer term issues resolved.
Yes, I can say too, just from, you know, one committee or commission that I sit on, the airport advisory, I look at the amount of ordinance work, easement work, all the different kinds of things that we have. It's just amazing and how much we rely on you. And I think to be able to be proactive and to have an opportunity to, to spend more time with you and in a really timely fashion is really critical. And so I, I would support what Commissioner Mills said. This is an important thing for policy development, for ordinance review, things that we should be regularly doing as a county. Commissioner Storley.
Thank you. Molly, do you have any idea on budgeting for these two positions? What they would require?
We have to review, we have to modify job descriptions to get them properly classed. But I think what we have for now, Brady has included the personnel expense for another attorney at the same level as our current assistant county attorney. So that's what we're guessing, that's our best guess as to what the expense would be. So it would be an additional full-time assistant county attorney at the currently classed, which I'm sorry, I don't have that number. Brady might have it, but, yeah, so that, that would be. The expense.
Okay. So for the, for that entry level? And what about the, the shorter one? The short, are you speaking of first the entry level and then the senior one?
No, what I, what I contemplate, so currently we have the, just one assistant county attorney. We would add one. One would be more senior level and able to help train in the entry level position. So we might bump up one ACA in order, because they would have additional responsibility. I don't, we can address that, I guess, when it, when we have the job description updated. But yeah, I guess that would be an additional expense is a potential that, that senior assistant county attorney would bump up in class.
And you would hope this would be for 2024?
Yes, for 2024. I'd love to, you know, once the levy is completely approved, just start advertising it and get somebody in there as soon as possible.
Other questions? Commissioner White.
And so Brady, what's the, the approximate dollar amount?
For the?
For us, increase in, for having another assistant county attorney.
Yeah, it's, I estimate total, total cost, and this is, this is even assuming the high of, of medical, assuming a family medical, which is a big factor in hiring. And with that, it would cost about $128,000 with that. It might be less, so.
Madam Chair, I should also mention, and I don't know if you've seen the media about this or heard, heard the discussion about this, but there are a lot of problems with hiring assistant county attorneys right now in the state of Minnesota. There are a lot of offices who cannot find candidates. So I'm, I'm hoping that won't be a problem for us, but it could be. And I might need to come back to you if we're not able to find candidates at our current rate of pay. But I think that we are, I think we're looking good compared to a lot of other rural counties for pay.
Thank you for that information. That's important for us to know. I was not aware of that.
Other questions? Administrator.
Madam Chair, thank you. Just one other thing to note, over the last few years, we have worked to create a budget book for you that is easier to, to kind of go through and, and understand what the information is. I think in previous years, we exported information directly from, from IFS, which is our financial management software. And we've really worked to kind of simplify the way the information is presented and make it clear so that people can more easily see what, what is what and how public dollars are being spent. In an effort to do even better in that area, we are planning to acquire some software that will allow us to do budgeting in a different way. It's, it's basically an, an online tool that will allow us to input all of our budget information and then upload it to the county's website where there will be a variety of graphs and tables that people can access to, to see even more easily how dollars are being budgeted. That kind of transparency, that kind of accessibility of information is really, really important. And we've had the, the vendor that we expect to use, ClearGov, which is a preferred vendor of the Association of Minnesota Counties, give demonstrations to our Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee, to our, our fiscal staff in the three, in, in the auditor's office and Public Health and Human Services and the Highway Department. And we feel that this is going to be a really good tool for budgeting more effectively and providing greater accessibility and transparency to the public. So that is, so this may be the last year, I think, that you'll see the budget in this format. We'll have a, a new format next year.
And I would like to comment, the Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee did have an opportunity to have a demonstration. Department heads have looked at this, and there's a lot of support for this. So I think it will, as you mentioned, really make it helpful to the public in explaining the budget and showing them in a new and more clear way what we're dealing with. So thank you for doing that. Other questions or comments? If not, are, would there be a motion regarding our levy?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to set our preliminary levy to an increase of 9%, which would be, let's see, a total of $40,875,272.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for all your good work.
It's a real team effort. We have a lot of staff involved in putting this information together. And I'd just like to convey my thanks to, to everybody who had a hand in, in developing this document. Thank you, commissioners. I'll move on to item 6B. As I mentioned earlier, we have had some new developments here in the courthouse, not real good news, but we had that heavy rain event last week. And as a result of that, we had, once again, water getting into the basement of the courthouse. Several weeks ago, we had a water intrusion in the land services office. That forced us to get a vendor up here to do a mold analysis. And the result of that, there is a high level of mold in that office. That's on the west side of this building on the ground level. We subsequently have shut that office off and have sealed it so that the mold does not penetrate further into the building. However, last week with the rain event that we had, we had water get into the MIS, that's the Management Information Systems Office behind the boardroom here. That is related to the pedestrian bridge that goes into Public Health and Human Services. Water was able to penetrate into the wall and get into the carpet in MIS. So, well, so we've hired ServPro to do the initial analysis, and they're going to be doing remediation in the land services office, but they're also going to be coming back to do additional sampling in the basement and in the, in the IT offices to determine the extent of that problem. Obviously, if there's mold in multiple places in the building, there's no point in remediating one area without remediating all of them. And this is a pretty significant health issue. There are a lot of us, myself included, who have allergies to mold, and we don't want to be endangering our staff as they come into the building to work. So ServPro will be back in the building tomorrow to do that additional testing and also begin the, the work of remediating the, the office there in land services. This work is never cheap, and I don't have a estimated cost for you yet on what this is all going to, what this is all going to cost. But as we get more information, I will certainly keep you posted. And again, it's not something that is really an, an option to deal with. We, we have to deal with it. So more information to come on that. And then just a reminder, we are continuing to pursue state bonding for the capital improvement plan that you all approved at the end of last month. I have a presentation in ELY to the House Infrastructure, what is the, I always drop a blank on the, the name of it. It's the House Capital, House Capital Investment Committee, that's what it is. A 10-minute presentation to, to blow the horn about our CIP and the need for funding. And that's going to be on September 27th. So always lots of other things going on right now. I won't bore you with details, but most of my time in the last few weeks, I just spent, been spent working on the budget and getting things ready for this meeting. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Commissioner White.
Okay, so we have water intrusion, and we've had water intrusion, where am I? On that end of the building?
Correct.
For a long time, Brian said, for?
It, it has happened intermittently over time, yes.
Right, and it comes down that, that?
That chase.
So, and Brian, if I recall what he said, he said it's not coming off the roof.
It is coming off the roof.
It's how it lands down and so it?
What, what happened is when they, when they re-roofed the building, I think when they put this addition on, they, they funneled, they created a little gable structure and funneled all the, the rain from that into this small drain. And basically, the drain is undersized to accommodate the volume of water that comes through in a heavy rain event. The other thing is, my understanding is, it's just clay tiles that are fitted together. You know that, like they used to use for, for tiling fields. And so they're clay tiles, they are not cemented together, they're just like fitted in by gravity. And so they're not sealed. And when, when those pipes fill up, there's an opportunity for water to, to leak out at those joints. And so the, the permanent solution for this, we believe, is funneling the, the water through scuppers down the outside of the building. I think trying to continue to use the, the existing drain system is not going to work, and it's just going to lead to repeated problems. So we are looking for a more permanent solution to this issue.
And, and so it is coming from being on the building and then coming off the building. So it's not necessarily a landscaping issue.
It is not, no. Now, to that point, the, I mean, so we also have water intrusion on the backside of the building. I think it's part of the effort to understand where the water is getting in. There are some different things we're going to have to look at. I think the fact that we are on a slope, all of Grand Wright is on a slope, of course, and so we do have water running down from, from the north. And I think what, what we're going to have to look at is what is the drainage around the north side of the building? Is water adequately being channeled around the building? And then the other issue is the role of the pedestrian bridge in, in causing water intrusion. I'm not going to say that we should get rid of the pedestrian bridge, but if it is, in fact, a, a cause of water getting in, we, you know, we've had this issue before as well, and maintenance has done caulking and whatnot to try to stop that. But it continues to happen. And so I, I think we need to look at perhaps, I don't know if we need to redo it in some fashion. I mean, that, that bridge is not in good shape to, to begin with, or other improvements that we need to make to it. But we really need to make sure that it doesn't contribute to further water intrusion in the building.
So who uses that bridge, since there's only one way in these days for security reasons?
It is primarily used by staff at this point. And it's also an emergency egress in the event that there were some kind of event, you know, active shooter situation in the building.
It's our, it's our current handicap entrance as well, right? Because of construction?
Well, actually, no, we're not using, what we're advising people to do is to drive across the service entrance into the parking lot from, from Fourth Avenue West. And I use the main west entrance. The good thing is, within the month, this project should be complete, and that will no longer be an issue. But, yeah, so for now, people who have mobility issues are, are being asked to drive across the service drive into the parking lot and then use the main entrance.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Storley.
Thank you. I was just thinking, in our houses, we have gutters in order to get the water off the roof and down. I don't know about the out front here, that would be resolved, or back here, but if it's coming on the ground, then, then it's from the ground rather than from the roof.
Right. And at this point, we have parapets along the perimeter of the, the old courthouse. So you can't have the water drain into a gutter. You would have to cut in some kind of scuppers, you know, something with water? Scuppers?
I've never heard that. You said it twice.
Well, you're not a sailor, are you? So on a boat, a scupper is like a little opening just above deck where if water gets into the boat, it can run out. And you can, and there's a similar structure you can put on a roof with a parapet to allow the water to run out.
S-C-U-P-P-E-R?
Correct.
People call me a scupper all the time. I just said it right up there.
Any further questions, comments?
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the updates and appreciate your attention to the, the mold issue on behalf of our staff.
I'll definitely keep you posted.
Thank you. Well, auditor powers, I think this particular item, our proposed tax rate, is appropriately placed following our discussion about the proposed levy.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just to, to look at the effect of this proposed tax levy and our valuation and change in our valuation. So we expect the, the tax rate to go down in 2024. It's, county tax rate is, it's a simple calculation, but it's our levy divided by total countywide values. And the tax rate should go down because property values have increased twelve and a half percent while the proposed levy is going up nine percent. So you're spreading that across a greater number of dollars, and so then it depends on who is being spread upon. Key to tax rates is anybody who pays property taxes knows is how your individual property compares to the average increase. So, couple of attachments here. The first one just shows how, shows our budget and levy this proposed and the tax rate that comes out of this, which is a reduction compared to 2023. And you see the rate does go down slightly from four point, forty-seven point three-three-five to forty-five point nine-two-four, but, so that's a slight decrease, about three percent. And you can see the proposed levy there. And, but that means nothing except how does that affect your property. So on the second page, we're, to simplify, we're just looking at homestead properties. And here you can see the adopted 2023 levy, the proposed 2024, and then a new law that just got passed this year, but will go into effect in 2025. So this, so the second attachment is going to show different valuations. You see examples one, two, three, and four. In the first example, no change in the valuation, just to see how does, how does that work. Then the second three are each going up exactly equal to the county's average. So basically, it should be a neutral effect if you go up the same as the average. But really, the, I'd say the, the most important thing on this is to look at this new law at the same time. It won't go into effect in 2024, but it will in 2025. It's the market value exclusion. It only applies to homestead, but it's, it's a change that's long, long overdue. So exclusion is meant to help lower value properties, but it's never been adjusted in its over-twenty-year history, while property values have sharply gone up over that period, which has made the exclusion largely irrelevant for a lot of people. Because seventy-six was probably fairly close to an average house. It was a little lower, but it was fairly close at the time it was enacted. Seventy-six is not even remotely close to an average house at this time. But, so it's not a huge change, but it should help somewhat. So just currently, the exclusion is forty percent of your market value up to the base level of seventy-six thousand. So properties valued above seventy-six thousand, the exclusion drops steadily until it reaches zero at a value of four thirteen eight hundred, because it's, it's meant to help lower value properties. The current maximum exclusion is thirty thousand four hundred at that seventy-six thousand, and then the thirty thousand goes down steadily till it reaches zero at four hundred and thirteen thousand. With the new law, the exclusion percentage remains at forty percent of market value, but the base level increases to ninety-five thousand. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it does help. That means the maximum exclusion now will be thirty-eight thousand at the ninety-five thousand dollar level, and then it will drop steadily till it goes away at five hundred and seventeen thousand. So looking at the examples now, the first one where there's no change in market value, you should expect actually a drop in your tax, even though there's a nine percent proposed levy. And in fact, for twenty-four, you see that drop, two point nine eight percent, and that's because this property is way below the average increase. Other people are paying that increased tax. Under the 2025 law, you see how that market value exclusion goes up. It's highlighted in orange. So, much larger. It's just coming off that thirty-eight thousand max. Now, they'll have a drop compared to 2023 of ten point one-three percent, if that was in fact in effect now. Example two, now you've got this hundred and fifty thousand dollar property that goes up equal to the average. Logically, you'd expect that property's going to pay about nine percent. You would expect nine percent, but in fact, little anomaly, the fact that the market value exclusion goes down as values go up. So it now has watered down the effect of that exclusion. That may be a little deep without time to absorb that, but you could take my word for it, that if your exclusion doesn't go up with the value, as you might expect, it goes down, and that's why you're still paying even higher than the nine percent. But if you look under the 2025 law, because the exclusion has increased, this property would see, if that was in effect today, would see only a five point six four percent increase instead of our nine percent proposed. Then you look down to example three on a higher valued property to begin with, that has the same average increase. Now, they're paying ten point five two percent. Again, it's more than nine because the market value exclusion, the revenue that they're getting in effect is going down. So they're not paying nine, they're paying ten point two. If the new law was in effect, that property would pay about seven point nine percent instead of the nine percent we're proposing. And then example four is thrown in here, a, a higher valued property, five hundred and fifty thousand, then going up twelve point six percent. Here, the market value exclusion is irrelevant because it's gone away. It's gone away even under the old law. It extinguishes at four thirteen, and it's not in effect in the new law because it goes away at five seventeen. So in this case, you see the exact same tax rate. One, and you might ask yourself, why isn't that nine percent? Since the value went up exactly the average, why isn't that nine percent? Another little anomaly is that homestead properties have a class rate of one percent up to five hundred thousand dollars of value. Every dollar over five hundred thousand has a one point two five percent class rate, so they're paying essentially twenty-five percent more in taxes on every dollar over five hundred thousand of value. And so as the value goes up, they're paying a higher percentage, and therefore, they would pay higher than the nine percent. And this is part of the whole state idea that we're trying to protect lower value properties rather than higher. So that's the essence of it. So, any questions?
That was a great explanation. Appreciate it. I think it really helped us and the public as well to understand that 2025 market value exclusion.
Yeah, so that's, that's good. I mean, you can see this and say, yeah, that's great. Next year will help homesteads. It would be good to encourage the legislature to, I think this is a small step in bringing it where it originally was, and they could take another step in another year. Get, get that maximum closer to the average house value. Not just here, but around the state.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brady. So looking at the task capacity on the first tat, or the first chart there, we have that increase, and it's largely, or it's significantly a property value increase. Do we also know about our new construction increases at all? Or is that part of this property value?
It is. And it was about, about ninety-three percent of it was due to, you know, general sales, you know, they do their sales ratio studies, and about seven percent was due to new improvements. So it wasn't, I don't even think it was an average, it was kind of a low average year on new improvements. I've seen it in the fifteen, sixteen percent some years, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for Auditor Powers? Well, thank you. It's really helpful. Great explanation. And then I know you want to talk about TNT, Truth and Taxation.
Yeah, and then the, the statute requires that at the meeting where the board approves a proposed levy, which would be today, that they also set the date and time to hold the truth and taxation. It's the public meeting where the public is allowed to speak on the county's proposed levy. And that meeting can take place between November twenty-fifth and, I believe, December thirtieth, and it has to be continued to at least six P M. And so I know the AMC meeting is the first week in December. Our first meeting is the next week, so that's a pretty tight window. Where also, we try to stay away from Thanksgiving so that people can meet with their families, et cetera, get back and can attend the meetings. So again, we've got a tight window, maybe between, between Thanksgiving and the AMC meeting somewhere.
So I'm looking at my calendar, and it looks like if, if we follow history and have them on Thursdays, that on my birthday, Thursday, November thirtieth, we'll be having a party here. And six P M.
So, is that a motion, Madam Chair?
That is a motion.
Support.
Any further discussion? Again, that would be Thursday, November thirtieth, six P M. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Brady, are you bringing the cake? If you do, do not bring candles.
Okay. I'm, I'm specializing in frozen cakes these days.
Well, in that time of year, that might be very appropriate. All right, great. All right, we'll move on to employee concerns, Commissioner concerns, and updates. Let's begin.
If I, if I may, Madam Chair, I believe I misspoke with my motion for the preliminary levy. Our levy is not forty million dollars. The, the levy was, I'm sorry.
So it's nine percent?
Total expenses.
That's our totals, yeah.
Total expense.
Yeah, so the levy would be eleven million six hundred thousand, six hundred and one thousand six hundred and forty-six.
Actually...
Eleven six oh one.
But it was the nine percent, and I think that was, we all intended that. I just said that wrong. I was...
Just so we get that corrected for the record, thank you.
It's actually, that was last year, sorry.
Oh, that's twenty twenty-three? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be twelve million six forty-five seven ninety-four.
Yes, and I missed it twice, it turns out.
I didn't highlight that, sorry.
No, no.
Third time's a charm.
Right.
There you go. All right, twelve million six forty-five seven ninety-four.
Sorry for the confusion, everybody.
Thank you. We got it. I was hoping you'd correct it. Otherwise...
Takes the team, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so if you're already bored on that motion, you're gonna have to...
Well, it was, okay, yeah, the motion was...
So let's go back and do a, do-over.
We do. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to set our preliminary levy to increase nine percent for 2024, and that would be a dollar amount of twelve million dollars six hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Thank you. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Again, my apologies.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Hickon, as well. All right, now we'll move on to our Commissioner updates. Commissioner White?
Okay, I attended the Northern County Land Use Coordinating Board last week, and you can't predict the weather because it was, we did it under the pavilion or in the pavilion, which has like no doors, no walls, no windows, but it was sort of like a wind tunnel, and it was overcast and fifty, so it was a good meeting, however. And there was a lot of discussion about the tax forfeited properties and that kind of being at a standstill and what to do. It's like no decisions. I mean, how far back are they going to go? It, it's still, it's still ongoing, so, but the, there's hope that there will be a class action lawsuit for all the counties, that the state will do the financial backing on this because this is, it's more than any one county could, any one county could handle. And, and then the question is, are they also going to be expecting monies from mineral estates? Is the above ground and the underground? And even as a regular property owner, I don't own the minerals on the property that I own. So it's, it's just a huge, it's not a good thing, but there are people that, the Association of Minnesota Counties, and this will be coming up, I'm sure, they've been quite involved in this. So there's, there's hope for us, but keep your money in savings account for now. And then they're also looking for some state support for blighted properties, like when there's a tax forfeiture and there's a, there's toxic materials in the ground, or if it's a building even that just needs to be removed. Counties would like some state support for helping with that, so. And the one thing that came up was that they're hoping to maybe develop some sort of programming to help people stay in their houses rather than having to forfeit them, you know, because they can't pay the taxes. Preliminary, no decisions, but it was a discussion that's, that's starting. So that was a Northern Counties. And then the healthy housing here in Grand Marais only had two, two new housings that, houses or units that were looked at. And because there's no money for mitigation or for, there's no money to fix anything anymore, that's kind of on hold. Jason from H R A was there, and he answered a lot of questions. He filled us in on Birchwood, the final transfer, as he wasn't quite certain, but it would take place perhaps sometime this week at the latest, he thought. He had not been around for a while. He was on vacation, so. And then there were, there were questions about the, the sawtooth switchback properties of fifty-two units, and all of that is, he keeps saying that he's, it's hard to, it's hard to build in Cook County, and it just, it's not a surprise, I think, to anybody but him. I mean, it's like, yeah, we have a lot of red ledge rock. We have a lot of rain, wetland mitigation's a requirement. And then the weather, we don't know when the ground is going to freeze. It's not the snow, but when is the ground going to freeze? All of those contributing factors. So as he said, he was very hopeful in the beginning that groundbreaking and clearing would start in the middle of the summer, and then he was hopeful for the end of summer, and now they're toying with, well, can we do it in November? And I said, well, my contribution was, do we remember building, pouring concrete for the YMCA? And I realized afterwards that nobody on that board was here to know what happened. I mean, the, the process of, of heating the ground, which is a common practice, I'm told, in for commercial work in other parts of the state, but in Cook County, it doesn't work because of the, the temperatures, because of the severity and prolonged nature of our... because of the severity and prolonged nature of our cold weather that to bring up ground heaters and adequately, adequately heat the ground to then bring up concrete and pour it and keep that ground warm day and night so it cures and everything sets up properly is not the best idea. So I doesn't know if that, as of yesterday or the day before, whether or not that would be happening this year or not. It might have to wait until next spring, which then, when does spring come? Is spring coming in, like one year, I think it came sometime in May where you could actually have the road bans off. And another time, we waited until almost July for the road bans to go off, depend, you know, so. So that was Jason's quandary. And then the Council on Aging, the hub, that group continues to fundraise to take control of their finances and reorganize. It's a very active, high-energy group. And so they are going to be having to, well, I don't know if they're going to do it or not. It wasn't quite clear, but they were going to have a jewels and tools fundraiser, which they then changed to jewels and handbags. But unfortunately, the person in charge has COVID. So it's his own fault for taking vacation. His words, not mine. But one thing that they would take, and I'm putting this out there, that some people have a number of suitcases. Suitcases is a high item. This is for a fundraiser. So it'd be jewels, handbags and suitcases. So if you have suitcases, drop them off. I mean, I just so happen to have an excess of very good suitcases because my life changed. I don't go anywhere anymore and not, one does not need suitcases. So that's, that's about that, so. Give them your suitcases. And that's what I have for my people.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Mills.
One thing I probably should have brought up during our budget discussion was just talking about the commissioner's salary. We, I had brought that idea up before, talking about that increase of the thirty-six hundred a year until we get up to that. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that spreadsheet I sent you, Commissioner White, but we looked at it last year when we were setting the final, final levy and budget. But that is not included in this current preliminary. It'd be more of just that contingency fund or taking it out of reserves. So I wanted to throw that out there again, just to spur conversation and see what we thought of that. There had been talk about as a minimum having it follow the COLA that employees get. But I feel like we still have a lot of catching up to do and so that's why I was hoping we would do that thirty-six hundred. Another idea that has been brought up from past commissioners and just others in the community is talking about the per diem instead or in addition to, or I don't know. We talked a little bit about that last year. I haven't done research on what would be appropriate or what makes sense and it varies so much whether a meeting is virtual, if it's in, in our county or out of county and it seems like a tricky thing to navigate, but I, I'm not against looking into that either. But just wanted to see what, what we thought about that and if we should be plugging it in because the sooner we get everything out there, the smoother I think our discussions can be for setting that final, so.
Well, I know our discussion about per diems and just my discussion with commissioners in other counties, I think our current per diem is, is very adequate. But going back to our discussion last December, I think, you know, looking at that thirty-six hundred, trying to kind of catch up a little bit. It's, it's the COLA and a little bit, but not doing a big jump all at once is a, a more incremental approach that we seem to be supportive of. Commissioner White, in your review of the documents that Commissioner Mills sent, what are kind of your thoughts?
Well, I, I mean, I think what I am earning, I mean, like, let's just say I only, if I only spend twenty hours a week, I'm making like, and we're not talking travel time, we're just doing the basic twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Thank you, Brady. He told me that's what it was. I don't like that six, six, six hanging out there, but. So anyway, and then the per diem, so the one thing I see where there's really, like, I, I drove six hours for a four-hour meeting and there, there was no other option and the value of the information from that, from that meeting was worth the drive. But that's a lot of time, so that's one thing. I believe that the, not the tribal chair, the board chair definitely puts in more time than the regular people and the regular people. I haven't called that in a long time. I believe the board chair for sure should probably get more than the additional amount that is, is offered at this moment in time. I mean, I don't, is it a thousand dollars?
A thousand dollars.
And I, I just think it should be more than that. I don't believe, I mean, I'm the new commissioner, so I'm spending a lot of time learning a lot of things. But I don't believe in a, necessarily in a two-tiered. And I, oh, for the record, I spend more than twenty hours a week doing this, so way more. But just for, but I don't track, I think Ann would know exactly how many, list down to the minute. I don't do that, but anyway, this this wasn't, this was, this is not an endeavor, being a county commissioner, for job security or anything like that. I feel I have a civic responsibility for having been able to live in this county for more than forty years. I have an understanding and there are other people that want to live here and I have the time to try to make it a good place for everyone to live. So that's my motivation. I know like they, they talked one time about like at McDonald's, you have a starting wage and then after a certain amount of time, you get to have what everybody else gets to have. I don't think I agreed with that and I don't think a new person should have less either, but you have to really work hard. I'd have to work harder to feel like, for myself, that I'm really earning more. The cost of living, absolutely. I think I have no issue with that, so that's where I'm at.
Does that mean you don't think we should do the thirty-six hundred? Is that what that means or what?
I believe that that the commissioners that do a lot of traveling around here, that's you three.
We all do.
We all. No, I don't.
You don't?
Not much.
I just assume we all do, sorry, okay.
But, but the time that it takes to get anywhere really isn't covered by a hundred dollars meeting. That's the thing. The Zoom meetings are valuable, but when you have to really go someplace, and I'm not talking Hovland to Grand Marais or Hovland to, like when you go someplace, that's a lot of time commitment and often it's overnight, which, you know, that's part of the job. I get that, so.
Before you came, one of the things we talked about is doing a, a different accounting, if you will, of our activities. And Commissioner Hawkins and I, who like to dot our i's and cross our t's and, yeah, know how many minutes we've spent. One of the things we talked about is, is creating a different form for us, which would allow us to, and it takes some time to complete it, but would allow us to look at not only what our meetings are and mileage, for example, but also look at like how many meetings do you have in a day? Trying to get at all the responsibility that we have in our positions to, to get a better handle on it and to create more equity between our positions in our different districts. And so, you know, we've been working towards getting more balanced workloads. We've been working towards, you know, trying to get a handle on all those things that we do. But that's something I'm happy to work on again. And I could work on with Janet developing a form to just track and manage the work that we do. So that would, you know, be information gathering. But then we, we need to go back and talk about, do we look at a COLA or do we look at the thirty-six hundred? Commissioner Starley, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts would be, right now, I think, looking at all the work that we do. You know, I don't know, do I write down the fact that I drove up to Caribou Lake to visit with somebody? I drive back in the woods. I check out things when I get phone calls. That takes me probably an hour. I don't, I don't, you know, deduct that. It's just a lot of extra things that is.
Well, and I'm not saying to, to put a monetary value on it, but to, to gather what we really do, you know, and it, it would take a concerted effort, but I would like to personally gather that information. And then as we move closer, and that takes time, you have to look at it over a quarter, over six months, over a year. But that's one thing we can do. And then as we get closer to determining this budget, to have further discussions about, do we want to do the thirty-six hundred or do we want to, to look at a cost of living? Are people comfortable with that direction for today?
Yeah, we, I, I wasn't looking for a decision today. I just wanted to, you know, keep talking about it. And the, the reason, where we got to that thirty-six hundred, I believe, is what I identified is I think we are short, using our comparables, we're short about twelve thousand dollars for commissioner salaries. And making that kind of adjustment for all of us at once was a lot harder to budget for than, or to swallow or whatever. Then, and so Commissioner Hawkins made the motion to, or the suggestion for three thousand. And then me liking round numbers asked if it could be thirty-six hundred. And so the intention, the, the idea was to work up to that twelve thousand, but we don't have to. That's, there was no commitment for that at all. But that was kind of where it looked like the, the data was, was steering us, so. Once we get to that point, I think it's, it's important for us to just do that cost of living so that things don't go down again.
Absolutely.
Probably by the time we get to that point, there's gonna be another years of adjustment or whatever. I don't know. But it's just an ongoing thing that, you know, when, when we have a forty million dollar budget, you want to have, well, you can go any way with that, but what I was gonna say is you want to have a good representation of the people you're serving. You want to have people who can understand that you want to have, I mean, imagine if this was a corporation with a forty million dollar budget. What would the board earn? What would the CEOs earn? I don't think that's necessarily comparable, but it gives a little perspective on, on what we're talking about. Similarly with any of the other staff positions, we, we try to do comparables there and how it works. So that's why I looked at the county commissioners across the state to try to put that together for, for some kind of perspective. I meant to, but I forgot to, I think, share that spreadsheet with A M C just so they could share, distribute that and try to work with it. Because it is a conversation that county commissioners across the state wrestle with. There's a, a number of counties in the Southwest and they have very similar populations, very similar sized budgets and there's a discrepancy in like ten thousand dollars in the commissioners just because one board decided to kind of keep up with things and the other one just stopped it. So it's, it's a tricky thing and you never look, you never look nice or good when you're asking for more money. But I think it's the right thing to do for, for this caliber of positions. And when people ask me how much, you know, how much time does that actually take? I say, you know, you can do as little or as much as you want, really. So you might find a commissioner who only does the bare minimum, only attends county board meetings, maybe. I'm not saying this board, but historically or across the state. And you might have a commissioner who's, doesn't sleep because they're always doing things. And so the, the accountability is, is on us and our constituents in, in how we communicate with them and what we're getting done and what systems we're putting in place. So I, I don't have concerns about that. It's just making sure that, as you say, when we, if we drive to Duluth, you know, that's a two-hour drive each way. That's four hours and say you have a one-hour meeting, that's five hours of your day and then you get a hundred bucks for five hours. That's, that's rough for, for.
And then if you could hurry home, like, and you could make the Zoom meeting, but you don't get paid for two meetings in a day. You get the one, like the one day at four meetings.
Right. Your whole day is gone for a hundred bucks, yeah.
Yeah, so that's just a.
It's tricky. That's why I'm, I'm open to looking at that side of things as well. I just don't have any suggestions.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it up today and it, it gets this conversation going and gets us thinking. So thank you for that. Do you have other updates that you wanted to provide?
The only other one I wanted to share was the Public Health and Human Services Advisory Council, which we had quorum issues, so thank you for ducking out there. The, the conversation there that was, was quite interesting was just about our PHHS grant funding and, and the suggestion was brought forward to try to encourage more quote-unquote pilot projects or kind of startups because kind of the, a lot of the funding goes to the same organizations year after year. And whereas those organizations have incredible value in our community, it's also important that we're looking for new and innovative ways to address issues in our community and to, to try to support those, those efforts. And so a real good conversation and that's gonna be bounced around a little bit and then come back and I'm sure we'll be talking more about it. But I, I was supportive of, of the idea. My concern, and this is not an either or, but my concern would be just if we dedicated funding for kind of those startups that could potentially take away from the much-needed dollars that current organizations already get and I don't want that to happen. But it was, it was quickly pointed out, it's, it, they don't have, that doesn't have to be that way. Maybe we just need to be allocating more for those organizations and that's a fair point, so. Also, I'll have a, a meeting, I want to clock here with Teresa Bida, our new E D A director. And I'm very excited for that and starting to wrangle all the different projects that the E D A has had going on and, and hope to in the future. Don't know if you heard the discussion on the radio about Tac Harbor, but that's something that I find very exciting and there's a whole lot of opportunity there, a whole lot of potential. Also a very big, complex project issue initiative, so that'll take a lot of time and a lot of expertise. But with, with Teresa at the helm here, I, I don't have any, any doubts. We'll, we'll knock it out of the park.
Excellent.
That's probably all for now.
All right, well, thank you. Well, I had a, an opportunity at the end of the month along with representatives from the county attorney's office and our county administrator to participate in a cannabis discussion with the members of the Cook County Chamber. And just a lot of questions and back and forth. Talked a little bit about the city ordinance. Mayor Tracy Benson gave a very good overview of what's happening in the city of Grand Marais. Pat Eliason came and talked about the fact that we've had, to that date, zero calls related to cannabis. And although we were anticipating lots of concerns and issues, there were none at that point. So anyway, that will be an ongoing discussion as we move forward with developing our countywide ordinance. At the end of August, I attended a Firewise meeting and one of the things we talked about are all the prescribed burns that are going to occur this fall. Last weekend, there were four hundred and thirty-three acres. I got lots of calls about smoke and what's going on, but W T I P did a nice job of updating people as well on all of the different prescribed burns. But they had Clearwater, Quiver, O'Kanto, Leo Lake, Hungry Jack and a number of piles at Greenwood. And all of that, as far as I'm aware, has gone smoothly. Firewise also was involved and at the end of the month, a spruce budworm presentation at Cook County Higher Ed. And Extension was involved in that and it was a very nice co-op. a very nice cooperative effort where about 200 citizens were in attendance, either in person or online. And they did videotape that. And that is available on the Cook County Higher Ed website for those that were unable to attend. Spent some time both at the Rainy Headwaters and Vermillion River One Watershed One Plan and the Lake Superior North One Watershed One Plan meetings, dealing with just project updates and fundings. One of the things for our Lake Superior group is there's an increase in funding for fiscal year 2024. That is come from the legislature. And so it is likely that they'll be hiring a very, very part-time person to do some of the grant work and and some of that to just keep track of those significant additional funds that we'll have for projects. And we also talked about reimbursement from Lake County to Cook County for some of our septic inspections. We had 104 septic inspections in Cook County. So we're very proud of that continuing work that's being coordinated through Land Services. And then, lastly, one of the things that was great last week was the Cook County Historical Society had their annual meeting. And they had Tim Conkrin introduce his new book. And then upcoming on October 6, they have their annual heritage gathering. It's been coined the lumberjack bash, a touch of flannel. And so we would hope that many of you out there in the public are able to attend. They'll be having a guest speaker, a local logger, Marco Good, talking about lumberjack work and logging and the history of it in Cook County. And lastly, an invitation to everyone on the board and the public, we have our annual fly-in pancake breakfast at the airport this coming Saturday from 8 to 11. And there'll be a presentation on the history of the airport in particular, focusing on Skyport. And the Cook County Historical Society will be there supporting as well. So we look forward to that event. And I believe that is it. Commissioner Starley, activities you've been up to?
Well, speaking of travel, I always evaluate when I do travel, is this something really important for us to have a representative? So I did travel to St. Paul, and I represented the University of Minnesota Extension. We meet twice a year, so it's in the summer. And then we meet in December, when we all gather. And we had a all-day meeting in St. Paul. The highlight of it, though, was to talk about some of the new adventures that they're getting into as a university extension. Last month, we reported that they were getting into the tourism section of Minnesota. And they reported that they're just getting off the ground with that, literally, and more to come on that. They have created a new area on climate change. And so there's a new person that's working with that. And already, they have a scheduled climate change workshop in Duluth. They're working with Duluth folks the end of October. So it's a two-day event. And we'll hear more about about that event at the end of October. Then the highlight of the day is to go to the State Fair. However, first, we went to the 4H building for a reception. And I'm always really impressed with the young people, how they come with their projects with 4H. And of course, they're down in the barns, too, but we didn't go there. But with their projects and, you know, it may look like some little painting that they didn't think much of it, and they won, you know, in their county, and now it's being displayed at the state. And so visiting with some of them is really, really inspiring for the future. Then locally, when I came back a few days later, I was on Zoom with Law Library. We had not met for a long time. Law Library is right upstairs on the second floor. There are three computers there. And anybody can come in and look something up. There's a phone. You can call the state if you need more help. There's a few pieces of material, books and so forth, that need updating, and we're doing that. And so that's a, that's a great everyday event that can happen here at the courthouse.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Commissioner White?
I forgot to say something. Healthy Housing, the Amy from AEOA was there, and they are, she's got some money for a person to help with rent subsidies and/or mortgage assistance for for a year. There's, it's only enough for a year, but to help anybody that might be in need of some fiscal assistance. And you need to sign up with AEOA to see if you meet the requirements. She said it's a very easy application. And she doesn't have much money, but she has a little bit for one person for one year, or, you know, a couple of people. So and the rents have to be market value. So it have to be, which is about 1,100 for a one-bedroom, was the market value. She was remembering off the top of her head. So that's something people should be aware of.
Thank you for bringing it up. That's really important, important to share. All right. Well, we have a number of meetings coming up, a lengthy list for the rest of September. And then we have our lodging tax comparison, which covers us through June. And then recognition of staff. And we're gonna kind of organize these by department this month. But we have Adam Maxwell with PHHS for one year, Andrea Cuthbert, also with PHHS for a year, and another year with PHHS for Brenda Portman. But Jade Woltman, six years. So really excited that Jane has, or Jade has been with us for that period of time. Great work. And then Kathy Polly, Human Resources, two years with us. And I just want to comment on Human Resources. Think about our consent agenda today. There were nine items related to PHHS, and there's one and a half people doing all that work, posting positions, interviewing, background checks, references. So hats off to Leah and to Kathy for their work. Kelly Schleep with the Highway Department, nine years. Laura Nelson, one year with PHHS. Mike Keport with Emergency Management, four years. And wow, Pat Eliason with the Sheriff's Department, 28 years. And Rowan Watkins, MIS, right behind us, 11 years. That's just amazing. And then we have some milestone anniversaries to celebrate. Amanda Anderson with Sheriff's Department, five years. Andrea DeBoer, PHHS, 10. Linda Mangan, Maintenance, 30 years. Melissa Rexrode, MIS, 10. Mike Smith with Land Services, 30 years. And Richard Wojcik, Maintenance, five years. So lots to celebrate. And we appreciate those new employees and all those employees that are sticking with us and are here to learn and support the people in the county. And with that, is there a motion?
No, I have a question.
Absolutely.
I saw this this morning, or no, early, last week, on my calendar for this Thursday. At 8:30, I have a thing that says, Commissioner, tour of Superior National Golf Course. More information below.
Correct. And we were invited by the EDA to go out and to attend and have a tour of Superior National.
Okay. I just had no recollection.
That came up back at our, I believe it was our July committee of the whole meeting.
Because I have it here. It's official. It's not me. So I just like, huh, no recollection. But okay, 8:30, Thursday morning.
Correct. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Now, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Is there support?
Support?
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Anything further? Last call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.